On the same page, and it was as easy as possible for the, um, businesses that have some multi-businesses to the state and stuff like that. Uh, so it's, uh, there was a little change in rates that went up and down in classifications. We balanced that, we couldn't make the certain percentage to go above. Uh, we had Johnny go through that, and we are online there. Uh, we were prepared for the state to start the portal up, which will allow them to go online and do that. They've paid them. We had first reading last month, which would improve the settlement, last for second reading, we'd be ready to go live January one to comply with the state law.
Well, there were no changes from last month?
No changes since last month, none.
And you've not heard anything from the state as far as any changes may need to be made this month?
I don't worry about that much.
Any questions? If none, we'll move on to the item B, which is second reading of orders twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two to discontinue grass clippings pickup. Uh, that is to cha- that's second reading, and that is to be changing the ordinance that we have in place. And it is second reading, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Public Works Director asked if I could have long video affairs when it comes up.
Yes, sir, would you like to explain a little of it before we see it, so we'll kind of know what we're?
I'll let, uh, I'll let Eddie, uh.
What we're looking at?
We've been trying to explore different options for the situation that we have now. So, one, a, uh, a salesman had a new leaf truck, and this one here is their demo. And we went to Greenville to see them, and they, they picked grass clippings up, and this is a grass ditch line. I don't think this is the way we still need to go, where we'll, we'll have complaints with debris coming, coming out from the trucks. The truck is not self-enclosed. And the, the video will show what was actually.
All that is, uh.
That's coming out of the truck, yes. And that was relatively new grass clippings, and like you can s- you can tell that the, there's no dirt or anything underneath. It was grass that it was picking up in this soil. Well, if there's a couple of them that's pretty close, and there's a, there's one other video that comes back. But i- i- it will cover the cars in anybody's driveway, too.
There's a hole in the area, too, wouldn't it?
Y- yes, sir. You, you'll see there's, I was standing in this individual's front yard, but the wind was taking it back across. You can see a house to the left of the truck, in the, in the far left, about midway down.
And, and one of the other damaging effects is when that dust then goes back into the radiator and into the motor part is what's clogging up the.
And we've, uh, I think the Public Works Committee has seen, and I'm not sure if I brought some of these to council or not, but they're. Where, yeah, m- uh, yes.
Eddie, are we still, we are still exploring no other alternatives?
We are, yes, sir, if, uh, I, in the lo- in the, in the long run, whenever we start getting some of our garbage trucks out of service as far as what we're running now, and we get the new garbage trucks in, one of the, one of the, I think one of the best ways leaning this way is to probably use them with the rear tippers and, and have a brown debris, uh, grass can for people. We'll still pick the leaves up with the leaf bag.
I know it's not, um, a perfect solution, but there, there are municipa- municipalities using bags. Have we researched that? I know Mount Pleasant does.
Well, I did, and I spoke with the, the supervisor up at the landfill where we, where we dispose of our grass clippings. And he said he's leery about taking them because a lot of people will not u- even if somebody started using the correct ones, he's afraid that more people will start using just regular trash bags, and it'll all be mixed. And they're trying to get to where they're going to be composting up there at the landfill. So, he's, he said that they would not take anything that came in regular trash bags, and if it got mixed up, it'd be listed as contaminated.
So, wh- what is, i- in comparison, what is Charleston County doing? What, do you know?
I'm not sure.
How those municipalities are?
We, we, we did some more investigating with Goose Creek and, uh, and, uh, Rock Hill just today. And Rock Hill is, and Goose Creek are pretty big on the containers, and they let the resident purchase one for like sixty bucks. And they, that's their container. It's not, it's not the, it's not the city's. But that would probably be the way to go, because we could, we could, we could probably service the city in a two-day period. The numbers I ran together were still with the num- currently, we have about eight thousand of these sanitation carts that we distributed to the public when we rolled out the, the, uh, trash cart program. And I went back and calculated all our numbers that we picked up, and we were servicing approximately eight percent of the city whenever we picked up grass clippings from April through the first week of August. So, it averaged about seven hundred stops a week.
If we could just get the people that are paid to cut your grass and pick it up and take them off, we could probably still get by with picking up the normal person's grass that just puts it out there. But we've gotten so much.
And.
Grass from these.
And the contractors are bringing a lot right now. You'd be surprised at how much is being dropped off here at the courtesy.
And that's not a problem here, because we'll pick it up with clamshell, and then, and we, and dispose of it.
Do, are we allowing commercial to drop off?
Yes, sir.
But they're, they're supposed to haul it if they do it on-site, which they're, they don't.
Uh, just unless it's changed just last week. Uh, the county's even shut down the grinder now for our limbs and stuff for what, a week?
Is, that's at a minimum. They're, they've got to get the, uh, they've got to inspect it, so. And we're taking.
If we, if we continue to pick it up this next week, we've got to figure out where to put it, because we can't take it up there.
Our leaves are, we're taking them to a landscaping place on one fifty-three. They're, they're, they're accepting that to com- for compost.
Well, that's a big help.
It is, it's a tremendous help.
The other thing I notice in this, uh, this video is the size of the lots that are being serviced. And since we're having a lot smaller lots come in, our new, our new subdivisions are somewhat shorter in road frontage, um, so.
Yes, the, uh, the average, I- our Monday routes were always about the seven hundred stops. We were averaging about two hundred stops, and that was on the, uh, the, the heavy subdivision side that, that has Westchester and Middle Creek. Smith, and, uh, the Monday, which is still pretty heavy with Chest Ridge, Glen Laurel, and now you've got Stonehurst and, and Highland Park. It was right around a hundred and fifty, the least. Thursday grass routes were still pretty significant, it's about a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and forty stops.
So, you got one, you got one week of, uh, that you gotta, that the county's not going to accept anything, and then?
It may be longer. It's possibly going to be longer, because they've got to figure out what parts, they, they've got to send a technician to inspect the machine that's down. And then it will be a matter of getting parts to it to, to repair it.
And, uh, what we did last time, you know, was we took the, uh, limbs and debris out to the, to the, to the fire, city firing range, and, uh, we did a control burn with the fire department to try to get rid of some of it. And of course, uh, as Mr. Robinson will tell you, we had ton- tons of complaints about that, because, you know, wasn't our fault, we were trying to get rid of it.
They ha- they still have so much debris up there, Mr. Dykes from, from the tornadoes that came through a year ago. There's, there, they still haven't caught everything up from all that.
You got any idea how long we can go without delivering to the county?
It depends on how much space we have at the, we, we covered about nine weeks, it was eight or nine weeks.
Yeah.
It was, it was down the last time.
Okay.
And we, we just cleaned that stuff, what we had taken in April, it's first of April when, when we cleaned up the gun range.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to stop picking up, it's, because if you did, nobody's going to understand why, you know?
Yeah, man, service is still, we'll, we'll find a place.
It just means we've got to handle it twice. Okay, um, item C, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight for the sale of property next to one thirty-six G- uh, Glenwood Road.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we've been approached, uh, if you remember this came last month at the work session, and we was asked to, uh, have somebody put a value on it, and we had done that, we've got a real estate person to come out and appraise it, her, his or her, whichever one it was. Gave an estimate of about eight thousand dollars, and the owner next door to this lot, uh, said he would raise his price to eight thousand dollars, uh, just to purchase the lot, which is right next door to the house that he already owns. It's located on Glenwood Road up from the fire station. We bought all this property some fifteen years ago, however long it's been, and, uh, it's just kind of been sitting there tax-free, so. Uh, he's offering to buy it and put it on the tax rolls.
Which would add to his lot?
Add to his lot, that's right, that's right next door, that's correct.
And the whole lot is not accessible, is it, at all, in its sort of, in the back?
I think in the back it goes down, yes, sir.
So, half of it. I mean, you could do some work on it, probably.
Yeah, a lot of gray there.
You, you know what his intentions are on, on that lot?
Just purchases all on that.
Just a, a buffer, he's not going to build anything to your knowledge?
My knowledge, no, he's not, no. Nothing I've heard, no, he's not gave no indication either way to us.
And if he was to, it'd have to be a, have to be a house.
That's right, oh, yeah.
Zoned it if he was to, but I don't think he will, because he don't have much of a lot where he's at now, it's a small lot.
That is correct.
The county tax assessor said that was worth sixteen thousand for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Do we have, you said we had an appraisal?
That is correct.
That is correct.
I think we got it, did we not?
I put everything with the, with the ordinance.
Should be in there.
It wasn't a full appraisal, like on an appraisal like that.
Yeah, it was just a letterhead, I think, from a, from a real estate agent.
I don't, if I got that, I misplaced it, so could I get another copy, please? But it, it was not an actual appraisal?
It was from a Realtor, that's correct. It, not from an appraiser, that is right.
So, would it, a market analysis, as they call it?
Yes.
I think appraiser, we said, would be what, another six to eight weeks?
Yes.
If we can get one then, yeah.
Who does the county's appraisal, Mayor?
I have no idea.
I think that's.
They have staff that does it.
Their actual appraisers?
I don't know if they're licensed, but they have a, they have a department of people who appraise real estate and other things.
Is it, who is it?
It's been my experience, they usually love on residential properties.
It says on the agenda tonight, so just keep that in mind.
All right.
All right, item D is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven to annex property on Meadow Lane. Which one of y'all have that one?
We do have a, uh, request for annexation to come into the city with a R seven point five zone. It's located on Meadow Lane, right off Kelsner Highway. Uh, the, uh, planning commission was four members, uh, one member was, was out, so it made it four. This was a tie, two-two, which legally is a no vote. Uh, I apologize for the picture being so small, but, um, as you can see, it's down there right before you get to the angles on the left-hand side. Uh, that is coming before council tonight for the first reading.
Any questions on that one?
I- is it my understanding that there was, I know there's some, um, certainly some concern about, uh, the roads in and around that proposed development, and is it my understanding that, um, there was a, an alternative or compromise, uh, discussed that night? Is that true? There was some discussion, uh, one of the discussions was about the lots that's going to be facing into the existing subdivision. That they'd be made to be R ten, like the existing subdivision, but the, the, and they, they did agree to do that. Uh, they've agreed not to use Franklin Road, which is one of the dead-end roads, and then there was another dead-end road. Uh, there's still ongoing discussion about exactly, uh, where the entrance will be. Uh, there's some complications that has come up on that. But the developer will be here tonight, and the, uh, and their engineer, I've told them to sign up on the list, um, to have their three minutes to speak.
Is one of the alternatives, was that the Pearl Drive, is that one of the alternatives of another entrance into that section? So, Pearl Drive will not be used for that section?
Well, I mean, uh, anybody can turn in, they're all public roads, but that, that was not going to be a main entrance to this.
The main entrance is, is the Meadow Lane.
It was my understanding at this point, that's correct.
Neither, neither of the two stub roads will be util- utilized in this, although there may be some need to connect into the utilities, but there'll be no road.
That is correct.
Is there any type of agreement we can ask for before proceeding, um, to that, to that extent, what, what we're discussing?
Well, you can correct me, this is just annexation, so there's no way we can really ask for anything other than getting it annexed. And then, once it's annexed, then is our opportunity to, uh, when they go through their planning process for site plan and, and the other things, is to make sure they meet all of our expectations, and that is a tab, we would, would do that.
That, that is correct, Mayor, I've made it very plain to them that, that stub outs, we would not allow a connection to them. I've made it very, very plain to them, I've made it very plain to them when staff reviews it, that, uh, lots facing interior will be ten thousand square foot lots.
What is it, stub out?
Stub out was a paper road many years ago, Mr. Wyatt or somebody did, um, for future. There's always been apparently a plan for a subdivision there, or he was looking to the future, who knows what they was thinking back then. But, uh, uh, we, as, as time has gone on, uh, I think we're all fully aware that the, the roads don't, you know, Franklin and all them, come around Pearl and all, um, cannot hold up to that, uh, type of use.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and they're in agreement of, of that part of it, yes.
Uh, Mr. Robinson, what, it's, it's kind of like Briggs, you know how Briggs goes down, it's a sever meese.
We call those paper streets.
Yeah, well, that's what there's, there's two of them over there, yeah.
And, and that's what they are, although they could be accessed since they're public rights of way. Um, they could be accessed should they need to connect their utilities through. Um, it is often beneficial, I'll give it to Matthew, but to, to have a, a looped, uh, water system and a looped sewer system. Uh, but I don't know that that would have, happen. I've seen that happen in Greenville when we were approving other subdivisions in Greenville. And one of the things that, uh, we talked about, Tommy and I, it, again, the, for existing lots, any lot that's created on an existing road here would come in or could come in as a summary plat. And those are the cheapest lots for the developer to manufacture, to have ready to sell, because he doesn't have to run sewer, he doesn't have to run water. It's already in that, in that road. Um, and the developer didn't seem to have that much heartburn at all about having lots that were equivalent to R ten, uh, along the existing road.
Yes, sir.
I would ask the fire chief, if we do annex this or we don't annex this, what effect would it have on your department?
So, that's a tough question to answer, other than to tell you that the biggest impact it will have on us would be financial. Obviously, if you annex it and a development is approved through the planning process, um, the impact fees would take effect, uh, we would see tax revenue. If it is not annexed, and it stays in the county and a development takes place, we are still by contract, uh, going to have to provide coverage to that. As you guys know, there is a contract where the county has with us for fire protection outside of the city, what was traditionally known as the East and Little Fire District. Ten of about five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars this year is what the county pays us for that. But it is not based on individual residences, that, that contract amount for us. So, if they raise or lower the fire fee, it doesn't impact us, because our contract renews every day for an additional two years, and then annually increases two percent. So, if it's not annexed, we won't see obviously any of the impact fee. And I think it's important, this ordinance that you guys passed, we get an engine, or a part of the impact fees is to provide a new engine, a new ladder truck, and a new station. To handle the growth or the impact. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, so if we do annex it, the impact fee would benefit the city.
Yes, and I would defer to other people's impact fee, but, you know, obviously, we don't, we don't have an interest one way or the other on whether something is or isn't annexed. But to answer your question, yes, there is an impact on us.
Um, give you a prime example, the, the Gale Street, Williams Avenue area, that's, that's a donut hole, that was never annexed, because there's never been a subdivision there, and that's a simple, uh, just like this, if this is not annexed, twenty years from now, it'll just be a donut hole. So, it'll be outside the city, but they'll still get the benefit of us.
I mean, based on the number of lots with two entrances be required?
We talked about that, and, uh, it, if it was feasible, we, we would recommend that, but it's not feasible without coming in on them road to, the neighborhood don't want them to come in on, so there's no need to have them two side by side, and so, uh, I would say no.
Well, based on the number of lots with two entrances be required?
No, no. Um, some subdivisions, we have two where they're spread out like that, it would be ideal to have two, but one will service it just like we have one at Westchester or places like that.
Well, isn't there a cutoff number or a threshold?
There's a threshold that where we as staff look at it to see, and the fire department participates and all that. And again, it would be ideal, but there's no way to put two for this subdivision, no.
What's that threshold?
Oh, Lord, I hope it's in the book, but I, yeah, sixty, seventy lots I'll look at, yeah, yeah, some, something similar to that, yes.
And this is going to come up later with some of the Highway one fifty-three.
That is correct.
Annexation requests. You've got one request for flexible review district, and that requires the applicant to have a set of plans to present to the city, so we can see what the applicant is proposing to do. But on Meadow Lane with R seven point five, the applicant really doesn't have to tell us anything.
That is correct, uh.
I don't like that.
That, that is correct, uh.
I would like for us to discuss the possibility of requiring, uh, a site plan or plans of some sort in these other situations, because, you know, you're, you're voting to approve something, approve or not approve, and you really don't know what is coming. And I don't know if that is legally possible or a good idea, I'm sure there are lots of other things.
But, but with all due respect, Mr. Robinson, you do know what's coming with the R seven point five, R ten, because that's the zoning book that was passed by council. So, the de- only difference between the two is, is the F R D means that you're varying from the zoning book. And usually the F R D is where they're wanting either more lots or smaller lots than what council has approved in the R seven point five, G R two, R ten. So, if you'll keep in mind that when you're voting for an annexation, you're voting for the city, when you're voting for seven point five, if you look in the zoning book under seven point five, right there it tells, and as long as they meet what's been passed, that's what you're getting. Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
But then beyond that, there doesn't have to be anything specific.
That is correct.
Until if city council approves it, and then it goes to the site plan committee, that's when you get down to the needy breed about.
And as long as it meets that book that's been passed by council. Anything different from that, they can't, they can't vary from. Uh, so, so that's, that's the difference in the two, is, is, is this body at some point or another, before you do whatever, passes zoning ordinance that told what staff can accept for seven point five, and that's what we accept. The F R D was brought on when people wanted to vary from that to make either smaller lots, more lots. Usually you're getting a higher count per acre with their lower in the lots. And so, that's why we created the F R D, to give an opportunity for the clustering and stuff like that, uh, for green spacing on.
And, and that does provide more open space usually with the F R D.
Do you want sprawl or density? That's right.
Take your pick.
The, the, the best tool we've had since I've been here and dealing with it is having an H O A. The subdivisions we have the most trouble out of are the ones, and I'm not picking on Lisa, but she lives on Meadow Lane. Daniel Drive, excuse me, which is part of that subdivision, there's no H O A, there's no rules or regulations in place for that subdivision, uh, where if you go to Westchester, I'll use Westchester, usually they take care of their problem before it ever gets up here, because the H O A usually jumps and gets out there and gets, that's the best tool I've ever seen us use. Yeah, because they've got rules that are a lot stricter than ours, uh, in each one of those, like where you live, you don't have to go to nobody to find out if you can put a flag out in front of your house.
Or no restrictions in the hiddens.
That's right, yeah, so that's the best thing that ever happened to us.
Mr. Fortner, um, as far as when this, if this gets, um, annexed, they will be required to submit a stormwater management plan, and that will go to your organization to be reviewed. Um, it is my understanding that, um, one of the basic principles is that the engineer will have to calculate the runoff before development and after development, and the after-development runoff cannot be any more than the pre-development runoff. And that is our ordinance, but it's required by state and federal ordinances as well, so it will be reviewed. Also, it is my understanding that our stormwater ordinance, as far as what we require in the ponds, in the conveyance systems, is more restrictive than it would be if this were to stay in the county. But again, if we don't annex it, there's no reason. But again, if we don't annex it, there's no reason why it can't be developed in the county. And I think our restrictions will be beneficial in this particular situation.
Um, and I, and I'll go back to the fire department on this one too. If it stays in the county, the fire department's not even asked to come to the table to show the required fire hydrants that we need to actually, uh, meet the NFPA. Whereas if it's in the city, he's at every meeting and he, they have to put in the amount of fire hydrants that's required.
The other thing that bothers me, um, Stan, is the difference in response time if they are left in the county and developed. And if they're in the city, the response time for the police would be very rapid, is my understanding. You can tell me.
Yes, no, absolutely. It's, it's not uncommon for the county to only have one or two, uh, officers working the entire county, so that gives you an example, versus the eight that we potentially could have in the city working. So, response time would be much quicker with us.
Well, I know when I had my rec, I got rear-ended at, uh, Brushy Creek Church on Pearson Road. And we were in the road for over forty-five minutes waiting for a deputy. That was before we annexed.
I was gonna say, because Highway throw works the recs and sometime they may be coming from O'Conne or Anderson.
They, they didn't come.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't. So, I think that that, um, difference in response time is, um, extremely important.
Mr. Mayor, I know there's no chance, what I'm gonna ask, an acceleration or dig acceleration lane in front of it off Highway eight.
That, they probably would not do that unless the state asked for it.
That'd be told if the state.
Yeah, it's a state highway.
That is correct.
Yeah.
If the developer would agree to pay for it.
Well, no, he don't have a choice. If, if, if the state tells him he's got to, he's got to, that's, yeah. But that's, that'd be something we would have to.
That comes under the state for me.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons I was asking about that Pearl Lane, because when I was driving around there today, uh, it is very awkward coming out on Belsa Highway off of Pearl Lane, off of the, onto a, the two lane, it narrows down to two lanes there on Belsa Highway, whereas up there, the Meadow, uh, lane, at least you've got the, the turning lane there. So, you got, you got some room to maneuver around there, you got like three lanes in that area. Uh, so, I'm, I'm concerned about that Pearl Drive area. And, uh, I know we, I know we don't have, we don't have the layout correct of what the, it's too early to have the layout of what the houses, uh, what the lots would be and how many would be, too early. Because, um, yeah, I was very curious about the, uh, retention pond, where that's gonna be located on there. But it's, once again, that's, is it too early for the retention pond location? Because you got an awful lot of slope in that area also, coming it, down into Pearl Drive.
Yeah, you have to understand that, that in most of these cases, the gentleman buying the property has not bought it yet until he knows it's annexed. But he's not gonna spend those thousands of dollars to do all this engineering until he knows it's in the city and he knows what his guidelines are, what he has to do to meet the city's, uh, requirements. Okay?
All right.
Any other questions?
Well, the, yeah, city council votes yes or no, based on what is allowable under R seven point five? And beyond that, the applicant doesn't have to tell us anything.
Yes, sir.
Exactly have to comply with R seven point five.
Right.
But Big Brother's telling the man what owns the land, if he can sell it or not. The government's telling him, hey, you can sell this land if this happens, but you can't if this don't happen.
Oh, factor to consider.
Okay, any other questions? Item E, first reading of ordinance to annex property off of Highway one fifty-three and Salute Dam Road. This is, um, considered ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five, and twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. Uh, and I will turn it over to Mr. Hawker.
There's gonna be a series tonight of, of about four annexations, four or five, uh, off of one fifty-three, which is all the wooded lot area where, where the highway extended through. What I'll do is walk you through it, um, how it's contiguous to the city. Is right down there on the bottom left-hand side where the pond is at, it's touching the city, and that makes it contiguous. The two annexations there is for F R D and for, uh, uh, G R two. And, uh, so that, them, that, that one is together. It's eighty-five acres, I think it's sixty-five and twenty, I believe is what it said. Uh, so, that, that, that gets you going from the city where it touches there. Uh, if you go to the next one, which is one point three one acres, what that is, is where it's highlighted in yellow, is a sewer line easem, uh, not easement, it's a deeded piece of property that carries it from the bottom part, which was contiguous to the city when it's brought into the city, to your next piece. You go to the next piece, which is eighty-nine point eight eight acres. And that's where it touches to the top part up there, and that is F R D.
Is that?
And, uh, I think the slides on the, on the council one will be, I apologize, I don't know what happened to this thing. Uh, but anyway, it's, uh, it's laid out for you there. And the, and the, the, uh, engineers will be on site tonight.
Is that Salute Dam Road at the north?
Yes.
And the one fifty-three extension going through.
Yes, right through the middle of this, that, that, that portion's on both sides. The next part is a small one point seven eight acre piece, which is up there at the top corner of, uh, the new one fifty-three and Salute Dam Road. And that will bring you to all of, that, that, that'll bring you all four pieces.
The, um, you correct me if I'm wrong, the good part about this project is when they develop that one fifty-three extension, they have already designed X amount of entrances and exits. So, no one piece of property can just come out on that extension. You've gotta go to a little frontage road and come down and come out at a controlled, uh, entrance and exit.
That, that's my understanding of it, Mayor, that's correct.
And it already has, it already has a bike lane slash walking track, uh, the entire length of it.
That, that belongs to us.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah. The one thing I'll mention is that the sewer line that they've shown as part of the annexation is not an unusual way for us to provide contiguity. The Columbiana Mall is part of Columbia because of an almost three mile extension of the sewer line that was, uh, dedicated for that.
We've done this on several occasions, the, the, the subdivision down on all of the street is connected by a deeded piece of property.
And I think, wasn't it Honda?
In the Honda, uh, same way.
We got a sewer line behind Rock Springs Church, goes all the way to Cardinal Woods.
Right.
That's why we got the Cardinal Woods and to, uh, uh, Outback and all them places, so.
But it's not germinating, it's not underhanded, it's, it's done all over, not just here.
It's because they requested it.
And the rest of that property will come in when it's developed where the sewer line is. The man that, that sold the piece for the sewer line understands he'll have to come in sooner or later, he's just not prepared right now, he's, he's holding out.
We're talking ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, general commercial lot. Where is that located? And how big is it?
Distinguish it this small.
Top corner.
It's at the intersection of Salute Dam and one fifty-three. It is a perfect commercial.
Look at the very top where the arrows, arrow.
Again, I apologize for the small one, I'll, I'll say it was full size when it started.
It's that little yellow spot.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Mayor, wasn't that good? At one point, there was this grand master plan to develop all of this property in some industrial mixed use and so on.
Yes, sir.
Did that just kind of wither away?
No, sir, that's, um, that's probably a conversation for lunch one day, but that was a study that was done and a recommendation. The only way that we can follow that study and do that recommendation is if we own the property. If we owned all that property like the county did down at the industrial park, then we could have done this the same way and had exactly what you wanted, if it was medical or whatever. But if we don't own it, we can't do that.
Or buy, or buy in from the.
Right, right.
Ones, nationals.
Because it, all of us in the county, of course, you already know, and the county does not have zoning. So, they're not gonna already label it a certain zone since they don't do zoning. So, that's why we've lost out on that. It's a great plan.
Yeah.
I think it cost us some money, didn't it?
Yeah.
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 Tommy, bigger, bigger picture now, referring to that plan also, but how many acres are we talking about in total of that, all this area? Not, not just these four items right here, but the big master plan, one fifty-three extension where it goes into Salute Dam Road.
Best I remember is right at four hundred acres, maybe a little over.
Okay, so we're, we're about a third of the way.
That's correct.
There, so we got two-thirds of the property, uh, undesignedated at this time.
And, and when we say that, Mr. Dyke, that's, that's on both sides of that one fifty-three. It continues forever out that way, uh, there's a lot of land out that way, but, I mean, it depends on where you wanna stop counting that as far as acreage.
That's just, that's just on the road front.
Four hundred acres was the immediate area around that.
Yeah, but the, yeah, the road frontage, that's the, that's what's gonna be prime land for, for commercial and for residential and industrial, maybe.
Does it go on over on the Patterson property?
That is correct.
Yeah.
All the way to the road.
Which fronts another road, which fronts, uh.
Pace Valley.
Pace Valley, that's right. That's why I say, it's never ending, and then you go across the street there that's got vacant land. So, it's, you know, it's just, uh, you can count acreage for a long way that fronts either Pace Valley, one fifty-three, Salute Dam, Cycle Oil. You know, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of roads there still.
How many different owners are we talking about of the four hundred acres we'll save?
Mayor, I think it was four, wasn't it?
Four or five, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's three tonight.
That's correct.
Sir, yes, sir. All right, we'll move to three. This is a project update from staff, uh, fire station one. You'll have to excuse Matt, he went and rode some horses this weekend and his back's out of.
I wish I could give you something that good, I apologize. The station is, is still progressing along, um, I, I didn't have any pictures for it because there's really not a whole lot to see from what we saw last meeting. Most of it is structural, um, in the renovated section, they are, uh, will be pouring concrete in the upper floors, or the upper floor, uh, sometime Wednesday morning, contractors will. Uh, all, all of the bay doors have been installed, uh, we have bay heaters that are installed. Uh, however, there is a, an installation issue that Jay Davis and friends are having to work through, um, they're working on that now. Um, uh, no change orders with that, but, uh, just put that out there.
I, I will have to give him, uh, credit. Dennis and Matthew and Tommy, I think, they've had two items that were forced on their hand to have to pay for. But they went back and did the research and found out it was in the plans to be done. So, they're having to pay for it, Jay Davis.
Thank you. Good man.
So, you know, as, as we promised, before anything comes to you guys, we're doing our due diligence. So, if we have to ask for something, there is no other option. And that's, I, I think that's important. But the station's beautiful. If you haven't been through, we, we're starting to have community members that come by and take, that, that wanna see it, and, and we're really proud of it. It's, it's, it's a lot of work and a long time coming.
Follow up on that is the financial side of it, and there has been no change orders. Tommy and, and Chief Loke have been diligent in regard to taking care of that. Uh, we have essentially told Jay, uh, Jay Davis that there will be no change orders. What you have here is an update of the finances, which will essentially show you that there were two pay applications, uh, since the last time the city council met. Uh, no change orders and normal progress of work. And that's really all we have to run and report.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll take it as information and y'all can study it and come back with questions if you have them. We'll go to number four, items to be discussed by council. Uh, the first one is a discussion, uh, excuse me, discussion of the house on Estra Drive. And do you wanna start that off, or you want, um, I'll just give you a little history on that. As you know, we, we actually bought that so we could accumulate, uh, some of that property and add to the parking lot to where it wouldn't have to be a brick wall built. We are at the point now to where, um, if, if council gives me directions, uh, that we can probably start getting the house ready for sale. Uh, we, we, we'll have to do a little swale down beside it to keep any water from flowing off the parking lot, uh, onto this property, which won't be any problem at all, it, it slopes to the back. We've already had it surveyed, and we've gotten the part that we need to complete the fire station property. Uh, there's no one living in it at this time, so, uh, I'm asking just for permission to go ahead and start researching, to put it up for sale unless you do not want that, and if not, we have somebody that said they will rent it, um, for a profit a year or so, I'm not sure how much.
Mr. Mayor, do we go on the price of the county? Do we get this appraised by a regular appraiser? Do we get a real estate agent to do it for us?
It, it's up to y'all. We can get a real estate agent or we can get our appraiser. We know what we paid for it. And of course, it's gonna be up from that a good bit, and we've rented it out for two years, maybe a year and a half, two years, something like that. And, and gotten, um, I think an average of nine hundred dollars a month, I think, is what we got off of it. Uh, the fire department's been in it since this gentleman left, and, uh, there's no damage to it, so I don't think there's no work to be done to it other than just, again, huh, I'm sorry, just, yeah, it needs updating, but I don't think we wanna do that. Um, so I'll let y'all tell me which direction you'd like to go.
I, I personally would like to begin the research portion and, um, and settle.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll just bring you some stuff back. If everybody's kind of agree, so that I'll bring you something back next council meeting to kind of give you an idea, and then we'll decide from there.
And Mr. Mayor, I do have this on the, uh, council agenda.
Okay.
For action from council.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor, I think we already have an ordinance permitting the sale of that one.
I'm not sure if we do or not, do we?
We did it in order to sell it, but I think we did.
Yeah, all I would be doing is just getting all the information back.
Right.
Yeah, to y'all. Staff would be doing all the work. Okay. Item B is, um, approval to accept grants awarded to the police department. Um, this is a item, and I, and I, I know that, that the chief has met with the, um, chairman of his committee and explained all this, but I've asked him to bring it to, to the council, uh, for us a vote. It is only a Jennifer vote, because it will actually take, uh, us, we'll have to add one more additional person to his staff that would be coming from this, uh, grant process. So, I will turn it over to you, let you explain each grant, so they'll know what those are.
Yes, sir. The three, uh, grants, uh, total about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, they're one hundred percent. They're one hundred percent reimbursable, except for the impaired driving grant, which is the one thirty-four five five seven. Of that, sixty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars is, can be used for equipment. A new vehicle and equipment for that vehicle, lights, striping it, the labor that goes into that, we can spend up to that much. However, the buy-in that we have is ten percent, so sixty-three hundred and fifty dollars is our buy-in, our ten percent buy-in for that. And so that's what we're asking for your approval, for those three grants, we're asking you to approve, somebody giving us money. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Waiting.
Yes, sir, his salary and all fringe benefits.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we hire them and send it in, and they reimburse us each month, correct?
That's correct.
I really wanna take the opportunity to thank Sergeant Ambrose for the work
He's done a great job.
That he has put into this. This is the first time we have had this sort of grants. He learned how to write, learned where the grants were, wrote the grants, got the money.
He did a phenomenal job, yes, ma'am.
And he is going to have to follow through with that. And this is just a real benefit, and there's more money out there, I understand, if we keep mining what's there.
That's right, yes, ma'am. He is, yes, ma'am, he's got several, several he's working on right now, as a matter of fact. Yes, ma'am, the one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven impaired driving grant is a two-year grant. We do have to apply for it at the end of this year, but provided we turn everything we're supposed to, we expect to get that again.
And we have to do the paperwork to track what we've done. But I am just so incredibly proud of this particular individual, but the whole department, for looking for that money. And that saves everybody in the city that kind of money.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And protects our citizens.
Excellent job, so that, and also, I think the police department's leading the way in this, and we appreciate this, because I hadn't seen a grant in, you know, two or three years, and so this, we need to challenge other departments to be on the lookout for these kind of things and take your lead.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The item C is a appointment of new city administrator. And I'll let Dennis kind of explain this to you, where we're at and where we're going.
As the city council is aware, we went through a fairly lengthy process recruiting for the administrator's position, which culminated in city council interviewing two individuals. And you indicated at that time, one individual was more profitable than the other, and authorized the mayor to negotiate an agreement with him. That has been done, I think the mayor met with him on October the eighteenth. And the city attorney has prepared a memorandum of understanding at the direction of the mayor, which is pretty straightforward, pretty simple. And once I pass it out to you, I'm glad to go over the terms and the conditions. Sure, did you ride that same horse you live around a week, too? I'm just old. Watch the old jokes. Watch the old jokes. It's just birthday, so watch the old jokes. You got me about five. This essentially states that you will employ Shannon Baldwin as the city administrator, that you have the right to terminate him at any time, he serves the pleasure of city council, that he will relocate to Pickens County within one year, and will be within a thirty-minute drive of the city of Easley. Compensation based salary is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. City will provide Mr. Baldwin with a cellphone and iPad for city business. Mr. Baldwin is providing his own health insurance, vision insurance, dental insurance. States that the city will budget for professional development as well as dues and subscriptions until he's the position of city administrator. Does provide for a vehicle allowance of six thousand dollars per year, five hundred dollars per month. That brings the total compensation package to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. There is a provision on severance pay that is really discretionary for the mayor. And that really is the major element, so do you agree? Or the memorandum of understanding. Glad to answer any questions.
Maybe just as a point of clarification, but go ahead and just communicate to everybody why he's providing his own, how he is providing his own health insurance.
Mr. Baldwin is retiring with the city of Lake Lour, I wish I could have done that at age fifty-three. But he has twenty-six years of credible service in the North Carolina retirement system. As part of his retirement package, the state of North Carolina will pay his health insurance for the rest of his life. And he does not need that health benefit from the city of Easley. We did agree, the mayor actually, I was not present when the mayor negotiated the memorandum of understanding, but the salary was increased so that he could pay himself for vision and dental insurance for he and his family instead of.
But he won't have it through us.
My understanding, he's looking at having it through the state of North Carolina retirement system.
Correct, yeah, he is, that's what he said.
And his anticipated start date?
December sixth.
Any other questions?
Well, we all had an opportunity to meet Mr. Baldwin, and you're correct that he was the better choice, and I think we're gonna be very fortunate to have him. He's got a good track record over a long period of time, and he will be an asset to our community, and I'm looking forward for him coming on board.
I'm particularly impressed with his planning background as well as his administrative background. He served as the subdivision administrator for years before he went to Lake Lour, and I can't remember which community.
Highlands. He was planner in Highlands, North Carolina, he was town administrator in Saluda, North Carolina, then he went to Lake Lour as the city planner and served in that capacity fourteen years, and has been the town manager for the last three years.
So I think he is very much on the cutting edge with the annexations and zonings that we see.
And I will add, just in case anybody, of course, I think everybody in here knows, the reason we're working a little deal with him, for him to commute from Traveler's Rest, is his wife is still in the retirement system in North Carolina. So she will be traveling from TR to North Carolina every day to teach so that it doesn't cause her to be so far away from her job. She's got a couple more years to, I think, do that, and so we're kind of working with him to get him halfway. Anybody else? Questions on that? I will let you know, I think Lisa has already put it in your box, we're kind of helping out with a blood drive. There's a gentleman out of Pattersonville getting his blood drive together, because of course, it's needed, but.